And first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all join, Dolores will be reciting it for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and roll call.
Councilmember Strong. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Present.
Stransky.
Yes.
Connie. And Mayor Rodriguez.
So it looks like we have three of our five council members present here. We have a forum, so we will move forward. And we will take a moment of silence in honor of the lives that were lost in the recent shooting in Texas. All right, thank you. I know we've all had some heavy hearts recently with things that have been going on in our country. But with that, I would like to move on to some good news, fortunately. We have a presentation of our proclamation recognizing the retirement of Dr. John Gleyer, and I do believe we have him here with us today. If you'll turn on your screen.
I don't get it, morning.
All right, we want to be able to see you while I read this proclamation. We're happy to have you here with us today. This is a proclamation of the Willis City Council recognizing you, Dr. John Gleyer, upon your retirement. Whereas, Dr. John Gleyer is retiring after 45 years of practicing family medicine in Willis. And whereas, Dr. Gleyer graduated from Los Aljos High School in 1965 and received his undergraduate Ph.D. degree in 1969 from Pomona College. Whereas, a member of the track and field team, he broke the school long jump record, which stood for over 20 years. He went on to receive his middle school degree from the University of California, San Francisco, in 1973, and completed his medical residency in family medicine at University of California, Davis, in 1976. Dr. Gleyer joined Buckle Creek Medical Clinic as a family practice doctor here in Willis in 1977, where he was a partner for many years before joining Redwood Medical Clinic at Adventist Health Howard Memorial. He also served regularly as emergency room physician at Howard Memorial Hospital and provided services to Willis seniors and local nursing homes throughout most of his career. Whereas, in addition to his regular medical practice, Dr. Gleyer has given back to the Willis community in many ways, including serving on the Willis Unified School Board, Willis Otters Board, and several stints as chief of staff at Howard Memorial Hospital. Over his career, Dr. Gleyer has provided pre-sports physicals and sideline medical coverage for Willis High School Athletics, and was a Willis youth soccer coach and a team sponsor. Dr. Gleyer is also a volunteer for Willis Community Services and the Food Bank, as well as Willis Terra Senior Center. And whereas, after retirement, Dr. Gleyer plans to spend some time doing some traveling, photography, river rafting, playing the guitar, and relaxing with family and friends. He'll also continue to donate his time and expertise to various causes and organizations in the Willis community. I now, therefore, Sabrina Rodriguez, Mayor of the City of Willis, along with Vice Mayor Greta Connie and City Council Members Larry Stransky, Heather Gonzalez, and Matt Strong do hereby recognize and congratulate Dr. Gleyer on his retirement and thank him for his many years of service and continued support in serving our community. Congratulations. I also hear that you have a birthday to celebrate, so retirement and a birthday. And with that, I hope that you'll all join me in wishing Dr. Gleyer a very happy birthday. Happy birthday?
75.
Yeah, 75, woo! All right. Dr. Gleyer, I'll give you a minute to kind of respond, and what are your words of wisdom after 45 years of practicing medicine in Willis?
Well, first of all, I need to say that I haven't exactly retired, so it's a little premature there. But we're headed in that direction. We're down to maybe 60%, but not to 0% yet. So there's still a tremendous amount of service to be done in this community, and I'm happy to look forward to more of it. He told me he'd be done this year. Thank you.
All right. We're honored to have you here today and be able to recognize your hopeful upcoming retirement and celebrate your birthday with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sabrina, and thank you, Dolores, for helping out with this matter. Really, really much appreciated. Thank you, City Council Members, as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Dolores, for working on this proclamation. Okay, I see Councilmember Strong has joined us. That noted. And we will move on to the approval. Before we do, I want to let everyone know that we are pulling one item on the agenda, which is item number seven. It's the discussion and possible action adopting a resolution establishing the city's 2022-23 project list for local streets and roads program, SB 1 funding. And the reason we're pulling it is it has to be presented at a regular council meeting. And since we had to have a special meeting due to just a typographical error, we're going to have to hold that over to the next meeting. All right, so moving on to the next item, which is item number three. We have approval of City Council minutes of May 11, 2022. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion on this one. Councilmember Gonzalez.
I so move, Larry.
I'll second Larry's motion. It's a vast match, Lester.
All right, we'll give that to Larry, and Councilmember Gonzalez, seconded the motion. Anybody from the public want to address us on the minutes in the meeting of May 11? Okay, having heard none, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes. All right. Next order of business, adopt a resolution creating a public art and donation policy for the City of Willis. Glad to see this coming forward. I'll turn it over to City Manager Bender.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. As the mayor noted, this has been an item that has been in the works for some time now. The council did receive the request to place a public art structure or sculpture at the Highway 20 park, and we're working through that proposal at staff level. One of the conditions or one of the expectations that the staff had when we were discussing that earlier proposal was to compose or create a policy for the city to accept donated art or loaned art, whatever the case may be. And working with City Attorney Jim Lance, he did a lot of the yeoman work on the research on this, and looking at other examples out there, we think this is the best fit. It's probably not an overly aggressive ordinance. It doesn't go into a lot of details about style, taste, characteristics of the art. But it does lay out a pretty thorough plan for the review of a proposed piece of art that would be placed in a city-owned property or facility. And the policy has areas where that art would go and not go, based on our ability to manage that. And also, the important aspect of that, the whole proposal, is maintenance and long-term ownership, and also some of the insurance requirements. And those are the topics that came up pretty clear when we were looking at that first or the ongoing proposal right now. Key highlights here is it does form a, we would recommend the creation of a three-member committee that would be appointed by the council. These are not council members. These would be members of the public that are, would be appointed by the council to form, to chair this committee and oversee applications of work to be submitted. It does limit, basically, the work in $50,000 value, and that is something that Remif, our insurance trust, thought it was a great policy to implement. We don't want to accept a piece of art that, you know, if something was damaged, stolen, we would be on the hook for. So, and I think that's, you know, something that's placed in the public realm is good for that. Like I noted, it identifies locations suitable for art, and we're really looking at the city parks, city halls, city facilities, some spaces within that. It also looks at the proposed or the planned trail. We think that would be a great fit for that, and some of the other city parks and the recreational areas. Important, it does make a distinction between what would be donated to the city and then what potentially be loaned to the city. So there's a distinction there between those two processes. And then finally, the removal of the art, you know, for any number of reasons. Either it's out of flavor of the community values, or it's just weathered, it didn't stand the test of time, or it just needs to be moved because it's in the way of another project or another improvement for a city facility. So that's what we have. Basically, it's a good policy. It's a good starting point. I think in the agenda summary notes that, you know, we're looking at a policy that is trying to be open and inclusive, but it does lay out some benchmarks for the review of art projects for the city. I think it's going to be very important to have the committee formed. And they have some guidelines on how they would review proposals, you know, or basically the type of structure. Does it fit the quality? Does it fit the location? The materials, the workmanship? You know, these are all items that we did look at when we were looking at that earlier proposal that is still being refined and the city's looking to accept. So that's the policy in a nutshell. I'm open, I'm available to answer any questions that the council may have regarding the proposal.
City Attorney Jim Lance?
Yes, I just wanted to inquire if the city manager meant to title this as the Public Art Loan and Donation Policy.
That's a good catch there, Mr. Lance. We can do that. I think there are some references in the document as well, so we can do that. That could be a change if the council so chooses to incorporate that on their decision to take action on this tonight.
So just for clarification, you would change it to City Public Art and Loan Donation Policy, or could you restate?
Yes, Public Art Loan and Donation Policy.
Okay, do we have council members that have any clarifying questions about the policy? Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's a really good kind of outline, first step. And I was just wondering, you know, the organization well that I've been chair of for a long time. Over several years, we've painted a whole lot of the fire hydrants, which the fire department has given us, basically, the go-ahead on all of those, provided we use the right colors, and also quite a few of the trash receptacles. I think with the trash receptacles, our previous agreement with a prior city manager was that she needed to okay the designs to make sure that they were, you know, consistent with city decorum or whatever, you know, to make sure that they were. We weren't dealing with political or controversial matters. And it was a pretty easy process. We just would provide the city manager with a, you know, a design or whatever, a depiction of what was going to be. I'm just wondering if that can continue to be a fairly, you know, we're not building any structures. It's, we're just painting existing solid objects, and to make sure it doesn't get to be, you know, many, many months, because it's all being done by volunteers, and hoping that that can stay streamlined pretty well. So just to, you know, ask if you feel that that would be the case, that it could be done pretty expeditiously.
If I can follow along with the comments that was made, I'm not aware of the previous arrangements to paint the fixtures, the hydrants, and trash receptacles in the public realm. But if any project wants to come forward in that light, this one is more looking at donated or loaned art, you know, kind of a piece of public art. I think we can continue with the painting scheme as-is. If anyone wants to come forward, we can do that. And to accommodate Chief Liz Aragor, we'll outlaw Dodge or Blue and make sure it's New York Pin Stripes, so it's making official.
Thank you.
All right, any other commentary? Councilmember Gonzalez.
Question for Brian. So based on this policy, would you have final say, or would it be the committee?
The committee makes a recommendation to the council. It is the council's position. Yep. You get to play keeper of the realm of public art.
Okay. Then with that, I would like to move to accept the policy with the changes recommended. I, anyway.
Okay. Councilmember, are you seconding the motion, Matt?
Yeah, although I usually like to hear from any public comment before we make a motion, but put a motion out there. So I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. We'll finish with council comments. Councilmember Stransky, did you have any, any comments or questions?
I have no, nothing. It sounds great to me.
Okay. And I have none. We have a motion in a second. I'll open it up to the public. Comments from the public? I don't see anybody in the chat wishing to speak. Do you have any callers that would like to speak? Okay, having heard none, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes, I appreciate the follow-through on this from city staff and ensuring that we have some beginnings of a framework that can be modified later as need be. So thank you for your work on this. All right, item number five, we have a City Council letter and resolution to the Board of Supervisors regarding the potential of the one-year closure to the county museum. And included in the packet is both the, is both the resolution and a letter. The Willis City Council, we're looking to approve this letter to send on to the supervisors, but essentially, says the Willis City Council values the beneficial relationship that exists between our two governmental units. Over the years, both units have taken advantage of the association by collaborating on different projects to aid the county's ability to deliver a range of services for not only city residents, but for the entire county. As you know, this collaboration has resulted in placement of county units such as a library, justice center, museum in Willis on city property. All these are on public facilities within the cityscape of Willis, especially the library and museum, as they anchor the area we refer to as East Commercial Street, Education, and Parks District. Our community is very fortunate to be part of the, able to accommodate the library and museum, as their visitors also patronize our eateries and retailers, important factors in a small community. Our community deeply supports both the library and museum, as they contribute so much to the lives of our residents. But they're genuinely committed to the museum and its mission of preserving and interpreting history. Because of these reasons, we find it shocking to the City Council to hear of a proposal by the Board of Supervisors to close the museum for one year as a concession to a projected budget shortfall. The City Council strongly encourages the Board of Supervisors to consider other revisions to the fiscal year 2022-23 budget as a means to ensure the museum remains open. The accompanying resolution adopted by the City Council emphasizes our support for the museum and its importance to the Willis community. The City Council takes this stance of our residents view the lack of financial commitment for the museum by the Board of Supervisors as an attempt to underutilize and underserve our community. We thank the board for their support and for helping to keep Willis a wonderful community in Mendocino County. And this letter is with the resolution before you today. And with that, are there any questions or comments? All right, are there any members of the public, any members of the public that want to be heard on this matter? Okay, I'll bring it back to council. I see Councilmember Strong had her hand up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't reread the letter in the last day or two, excepted what you just read out about. I just wanted to make it clear that, that we're very much speaking on behalf of the whole broader community, in addition to the impact that the closure would have on the City of Willis, but to emphasize that this is a resource for the whole county, and it would be a really horrible step backwards. So just, if there's a slight wording there to make sure that that's really clear, so that I certainly approve of it and the, the letter and its intent to encourage the board not to cut and close the museum. Thank you.
There was one portion of the second paragraph that talks about commitment to the museum and its mission of preserving and interpreting history, and how important it is to the county. We do speak for the city, the residents of the City of Willis, so we have to make sure that our voice is heard, as we represent our constituents here. There was an open house at the museum last week on Friday. Supervisor Hasek was there, Councilmember Stransky, and myself, and it was said that there were to be about 100 of us that showed up to support the museum staying open and checking out the exhibits and that sort of stuff that day. So, and I know that I've heard from many people in the community that are concerned, as I'm sure each of you have as well. I see heads nodding, so I know that's true. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I so move, this is Larry.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes. So the motion carries to send the letter and resolution to the County Board of Supervisors regarding the county museum with a 40-year vote, full support. Okay, our next order of business is discussion and possible action, adopting a resolution, approving a memorandum of understanding with Trout Unlimited, establishing the framework for a pilot study to determine the benefits of a proposed flow release from Morris Reservoir to Davis Creek for native, for native fish. The presenting staff member will be Public Works Director Herman.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This is Scott Herman, Public Works Director. Trout Unlimited came to approach the city end of last summer, 2021, early fall, and was interested in doing a pilot study to determine whether releasing up to 75 acre feet of water per year from the reservoirs into Davis Creek would have a measurable effect on the health of the native Anadromus fish populations. This pilot study would run, per the MOU, from 2022 to 2025, with the determination of the amount up to 75 acre feet on June 1 of each year of the pilot study. I have Matt Clifford from Trout Unlimited is on the line tonight, and he can give you an overview of their intent and answer any questions that council may have as well.
Well, thank you, Scott. I'll go ahead. First of all, thank you for having me back, first and foremost. I'm Matt Clifford. I work for the nonprofit Trout Unlimited for our California Water Project. As you probably recall, I came and briefed the council back in December about this idea we have. My job in a nutshell is to try to keep, you know, creeks and streams running in this part of the world throughout the long summer dry season, you know, when young salmon and steelhead, that the small ones are rearing at that time. And so we came with this idea of releasing at a fairly slow rate, you know, some, some water from the water supply reservoirs down into Davis Creek and possibly even down to outlet, which actually has the, one of the longest runs of coho salmon in the entire Eel River watershed, excuse me, as well as a significant run of steelhead, still, to try to augment flows. And got a generally positive response from the council at the time. And so in that time, since we first came to you in December, I've been working with Scott and with the city manager, Brian Bender, about developing a project, you know, kind of the details of what that kind of project would look like. And what we're really looking to do here is an experiment where we would release some water out of Morris throughout the, throughout the dry season, and just see how far down the creek we can carry it. You know, there's a lot of unknowns here, like how much it will seep through the ground, how much will get taken up by other users, you know, how far can we, you know, by various means, get that water down? And we have a whole team of folks that work for my organization that can monitor that. We have a hydrology crew that can install, you know, stream gauges downstream at a couple points. We've got a plan for that, to kind of like see what we can do. And if that works well, particularly this summer, the plan would be like, then can we come back and see, maybe would a longer-term arrangement make sense? We would like to talk to the city about what that might look like. So in that interim, since I was talking to you in December, I've been working with Scott and Brian. I've been reaching out to state and federal agencies to kind of like get their blessing on the, on this idea, to figure out how much water we've got to work with, you know, that 75 acre foot number came out from, from Scott and Brian. We've been developing inside TU a monitoring plan for like where we would put gauges downstream to measure flow and water quality. You know, the agencies would want to see that. We've been talking to landlords downstream, and we're working with the Mendocino County Resource Conservation District on this, and trying to make connections, because we don't want to send a bunch of water downstream and just have other people suck it up, right? So we're trying to do some outreach to, you know, talk to people about this, you know, that we might be doing this and what kind of arrangement we can work out. And then, you know, we developed a draft agreement, you know, that would govern the project if we do it. And just to be clear, I've tried to draft that agreement. I mean, it's nice to have something on paper, but we've really tried to draft it in a way that, on the city, because we understand that we're dealing with reservoirs that are for water supply here. And so we understand that the city needs to be able to like cancel this at any time, for example, because you don't know operationally what's going to happen, and you need to be able to provide water for people. We get that. So I've tried to really kind of write something up that, you know, memorializes this, this experiment we want to do, but doesn't really bind the city in anything. So we've got that in place. And the last thing we did is we got it to rain in March, right? That was the hardest part, because we didn't even know if you'd have full reservoirs, and you know, we were looking to go into the summer here. But, but it did rain, thank God, because we were heading for one of the driest years ever, and now we only have like a really dry year. But we do have full reservoirs, right? So we're kind of poised to do this project, you know, if the city agrees to it. And so I just wanted to come back to you at this point, and with this agreement, and just see if the council is willing to go ahead. And that's the point we're at. And so if, if the answer is yes, what we would do is, our team thinks that, you know, in conversation amongst themselves and with the agencies, that we would probably start in a year like this, sometime in early July, and run about three tenths of a cubic foot per second of water, that's about 130 gallons a minute, down the creek for the next month through the, through the very first week in November. And that, that comes down to the 75 acre feet we've been talking about. We might vary the flow rate, or, you know, try to work with you all to vary the flow rate, you know, in the short term, up and down a little bit, just to try some experiments and see, see what happens if we do that. But that would be the general water budget, we would stay within, the 75 acre feet. But that would be the general water budget, we would stay within the 75 acre feet. And we would just see, again, monitor the water quality and the flow, see how far down we can take the water, look for fish and see what kind of benefit we think we're having, and then just kind of reassess at the end of the year. We've written the agreement, as Scott said, to last for long, so we could do this in subsequent years if we need to. But I think our desire initially is just to see what we can learn in this year. It's a pretty dry year this year, obviously, and so I think we would learn a lot about how this would function under dry season conditions. So that's what I'm here for. And I guess at that point I would stop and just throw it open for any questions that the staff or the council might have.
Okay, we'll open it up to council. Is there anybody on the council that has a question? Any clarifying questions?
Yeah, I do have questions. I guess I was expecting a little more of the background information, some of which you're addressing orally right now, but that was not in the packet, kind of like where we stand now, like are there years of data, what's going on with the stream flows, what the impact has been with those stream flows on the Anadromus fish? And it doesn't seem to have any kind of baseline from which you can determine what the effect would be this year compared to the last five years or the last 10 years. So that was a concern I had, that I don't feel like I understand the context and therefore whether results would actually be meaningful. And I am really concerned about making a commitment June 1st for the whole dry season ahead into the very end of October when we don't know, and nobody knows what kind of weather we're going to have, whether it's going to be really hot and we're going to go through our water, whether there will be rain. So a commitment made at the beginning of the year that could potentially deplete the reservoirs when we get to the critical point down the year really makes... I just want to err on the side of caution, and I feel like this is, it scares me.
Yeah, those are good questions. I'm going to take them in reverse order because about the commitment, I mean, the simple answer to that is there is no commitment. You know, as I said, there's a clause in the agreement which says the city can stop it at any time. And so if we get into the middle, we start releasing water and we get into the middle of August or something, and it looks like the city's going to run out of water or something like that, or there's some operational reason that you just stopped this release, the agreement says you can stop it. And your council asked for that. I thought I had already drafted it that way. They wanted even stronger language, and so I put it in there. And that's our goal here. Again, we understand how serious it is to be responsible for people's water supply, and we understand that it needs to take precedence over what we're doing. And so I've really tried to draft it and have drafted it, I think, without committing the city to keep going throughout the summer. As for being able to tell the benefit of it, I mean, that's why we have on staff our conservation hydrology team. And what they can do is, there's not a ton of baseline data. We have some because we've been monitoring this watershed. I don't know that we've been monitoring Davis Creek specifically. But what we can do is install gauges prior to the start, and we can see how much the level rises at various points downstream when we start the release. And we can see if we get, if the stream is flowing at 500 gallons a minute and we start releasing our 130, we can see whether it goes up downstream or whether we just don't pick up that signal, meaning that the flow has gotten taken by someone else or it's gone to the ground or whatever. So we can kind of tell what's going on. We can also increase the rate, like I was saying, over the short term, like, well, let's pump it up to 500 gallons a minute and see what happens and see how far downstream that goes. And so, you know, I'm not a scientist, but we employ folks who are, and they're pretty confident that we can get an idea of what it would look like here, you know, with and without the flow releases. So that's how we would plan to handle that. We thought this through pretty carefully.
All right, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yeah, kind of a little bit on, following up on Magis thing, maybe a question for Matthew and Scott. Based on some of what you're talking about, Matthew, installing meters or something to study at various points. Scott, would this help us in any other way besides, I mean, I'm not trying to be cold and callous towards the fishes, but is there any side benefit to this as far as our watershed that you could speak to?
No, yeah, I don't know. On the monitoring stations, we base it off of our weer below Morris Dam on releases. So I don't know if it would do any good further down for us, but maybe Matt can fill in on that as well.
So as far as benefits go, and I'm probably jumping way ahead here, maybe this isn't, but I'm going to do it anyway. Right now, my understanding is that the city, these reservoirs fill up pretty fast when it rains, but the city has to hold pool down throughout most of the dry season for flood control reasons. This is pretty common in coastal California, right? I mean, we get early rains like we did this last December, remember, where it just rained for... My understanding is that the city can't just allow those reservoirs to fill and keep the pool full because you have to keep some space in there in case we get a big rain again and there's a flood, right? And so you really rely on the late season rains, like, you know, thank God we got this year in March to fill the reservoirs. But that's not an ideal situation. There's going to be some years when you can't fill those reservoirs because although it rained earlier in the year, it didn't rain enough later and you had to keep the pool down, and now the dry season's starting and we have less than full reservoirs. Your folks, Scott, you all have told me that that's been an issue. There are solutions to that, infrastructure solutions, like you could do an inflatable dam or something like that, which I know the city has looked at doing. And my thought was that since the years that we would want this, if this works for fisheries in a good way, the years we would really want to have this water are going to be the very driest years where it doesn't rain late year, exactly the years where you wouldn't have water to work with because it didn't rain, and you're going to have the lowest flows in the summer. So it would really be worth it from a fisheries standpoint if we had some way to keep that pool, to be able to capitalize on those early rains like that. And the way you would do that is by having, instead of the existing flashboards, which are very cumbersome to work with, you'd have an automatic structure you could raise and lower easily, so that if a flood risk came along, you could just drop the, you know, this has been done at other dams, you can just like drop the pool. And that allows you to keep a fuller pool earlier in the year, and that would actually create, it would have the effect of creating more water supply, not just for the city, but for like this flow release. And that's the kind of thing, if the fishery value were established here, we could help the city, you know, go to DWR or the state or whoever else and try to get a grant to install something like that, which I think would make the pie bigger for everybody, for the city and for fish. And so that's kind of like my, again, I'm probably getting ahead of the game here, but to me, that's like a prize at the end of the day, that it would really be worth something. I think that'd be a great story to tell and a great pitch to make to funders, and I think it could really help both of us.
Thank you. That kind of helps.
I have a question for city manager Bender. Are there other components of this proposal that you would like to see before council's consideration that maybe we haven't received yet?
Good point.
We talked a little bit about recent.
Yeah, good point there. You know, Public Works Director Herman has been working closely with Matt and his group there. I think one of the things, one of the early discussions we had with Trout Unlimited was that we wanted to be, we wanted to have a reassurance that there was a whole plan to look at the complete fisheries. We don't want to be the end all. You know, improving fisheries is a very comprehensive package. So you got improvements to the riparian habitats, the riparian corridor, water quality, working with land uses or land corners and modifying land uses downstream. It's a kind of a comprehensive package. Just doing flow augmentation and putting more water into the fisheries is not the solution. We were very communicative to the Trout Unlimited group from the beginning was that we wanted to make sure that our resource that we would be allocating to this effort was going to a good cause and that there was buy-in from other users and Jason Landowners downstream and from other entities. So that's something I think that had to be, I'm glad we had the opportunity to explain that tonight, and maybe Trout Unlimited could come back with a little bit more detail on how we are part of a system and what those other components are going to be coming into play with this pilot study and effort that Trout Unlimited is working with the state agencies.
Yeah, I can add to that. Brian, that's a great point. I just wanted to share, folks, we actually do have, this is the second in a series of grants from the Wildlife Conservation Board to work basin-wide in the Outlet Creek watershed. So we've been going in and doing other projects with smaller landowners, you know, to improve flow and improve habitat. We're looking, I know with the city separately, we're looking at like a barrier down near your wastewater plant, which is, you know, removing a migration barrier that stops fish from getting upstream to spawn. We've been looking at different habitat projects. We are moving into outlet in a more comprehensive way to try to address all different aspects to the problem and not just, this is one piece of it. We're also talking to other reservoir others in the watershed about similar releases like this. And so, you know, we can come and present if you like and talk about other things we're doing, but this is just one piece of the plan for sure.
Okay, I can open it up to a motion or I can hear from the public first? Are we okay to hear from the public first, council? Okay. I see that John Alameda has requested to speak. So John, you have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. You know, this is going to be a big water grab for the illegal dope growers on the Eel and the Outlet. They are going to love this. 24 million gallons, one month's use of the city of Willits is approximately what it is. One twelfth of their water supply going down so they can draft this to their illegal dope growers. I would be more in favor of it if they'd have the law enforcement side of fish and game going after these illegal dope growers to eliminate them. But I can't see giving this water away, especially when you see other communities wanting to grab some of Willits' water also. And then people like me in the valley with wells are worried about, maybe you're going to have to go to the Elias well and pump it so hard that it affects my well. So I don't think that looks so good. If the Pillsbury Dam gets taken out and there's six water agencies in the Yucay area from Redwood Valley to Hoppin', and they don't get their water, and they see that you're dumping water in the creeks and stuff in the middle of the summertime and it's dry, they might think you have enough to give them. And pretty soon, everybody's going to want this. I would think real careful about it. This is the wrong way. Until we get the illegal dope growers taken, then I think we ought to not do this. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may jump in, and Scott, please support my comments or follow up my comments. I won't just speak out of turn. The intention from day one was not to release this, to release the water from the reservoirs and then utilize the Elias well groundwater to make up for that, the flow that we injected or allowed to go into the creek. That's no intent, this is not the, that is not the basis for any decisions that Scott would subsequently make on the approval and say, oh yeah, we can let the water flow out of the reservoirs, we always can turn on the Elias well and go from there. We view them as two separate resources. This is entirely looking at our capacity in the reservoirs to accommodate this request. That's it. We're not going to over pump or draw down from the Elias well activity to make up for what is agreed to if Public Works Director agrees to release the flow. So I just want to make sure that's clear with the council and the general public. It's not one for the other. They're both separate entities, and like we know, the council has already adopted a policy for the groundwater usage, and this is entirely utilizing the reservoir capacity.
Can I add here? Is that, I don't know your procedure.
Yeah.
Just want to note that, you know, we saw about the cannabis grows downstream. We've looked at Google Earth and we see a lot of greenhouses in that area, and that's something that's occurred to us too. It's something the Department of Wildlife mentioned to us, like, hey, heads up, there's some cannabis there. And so we're aware of that. I was on the phone today, or yesterday actually, with a CDFW staffer, and we actually looked it up while we were talking, and a surprising proportion of the cannabis down there is actually licensed, which surprised me. And so anyone who's licensed, you know, under the state water board cannabis policy can't legally take water during the summer, right? They have to store it in the winter or else you as a well or something. So there's some reason to believe, I'm not naive, I understand things can happen, and I understand there may be someone licensed there, but there's good reason to think we won't have as big a problem with that kind of diversion as one might think just looking at it. To begin with, we've done some outreach in the area, and I don't think there's any way we're going to know how effective this is until we try it. And that's what we'd like to do. And if it doesn't work, you know, we try. But I think the upsides and the benefits are high enough, it's really worth seeing what we can do.
All right, are there any other members of the public that would like to address the council?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, would you like to state your name?
My name is Rosamund Crowder.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I also agree with John Alameda that it's a bit of a slippery slope and that as soon as the city of Willits is known as donating water to the fish, and I didn't see anything about there being any paying for this water. I know people pay for the water at Park Well, and 75 acre feet would, if you had to pick that up at the Park Well, it would be about $404,000, something like that. And so other municipalities, you know, we could have yet another winter where it stops raining in January, and we may not get spring rain next year. And then we have, you know, possibly a, you know, really low reservoir, and yes, the city could at that time say, no, we're not going to do it again. But at the same time, the reservoir would be, you know, 75 acre feet lower than it would be otherwise. You know, there's just no telling what might occur in the way of drought. And I know that, you know, we were just told that this is separate from the groundwater, and yet I don't really see that because if the city does not have enough water in the reservoir, the city is going to use groundwater. And in fact, the way the operational use plan is written, it looks to me like the city would augment reservoir by up to eight, what was it, 8 million gallons a month, every month. And so on that was just an average, so it could be, you know, heavy pumping in the summertime a year down the line. And so it just, it worries me, and I appreciate all the wonderful work that Trout Unlimited is doing, and I appreciate that the stream, the in-stream flow has really been compromised over these years, and the stream gauge at Outlet Creek showed that in the early 90s that the stream flow dropped precipitously, suddenly, and that corresponded to Centennial Dam being built. And I really feel that this is a losing stream, and I guess that's something that maybe this study would show, but I think there's other ways to find that out if it's a losing stream. And so I'm worried that now is not the time to be doing this kind of a study, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other members of the public?
Sorry, can I add one thing here? This is Matt with TU again.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just, on the issue... I just, on the issue of compensation, I just, that was brought up, I just wanted to be clear that what I would propose with this project, the way I've been thinking about it, is if this initial pilot study shows a benefit, which again is the idea of doing the pilot study, just tell us that. I'm dealing, I'm funded right now for this experimental stage with, from the Wildlife Conservation Board, which has something like a hundred million dollars right now available for projects like this one. And so if this shows a benefit, what I would propose is we go back to the WCB and say, hey, we've got a good release here. Let's see if we can negotiate a longer-term arrangement with the city and pay them fair market value per acre foot for this water. That's kind of been the intention all along, so I just wanted to throw that out there. We don't need this to be like a, you know, a voluntary, I mean, a donated thing forever. I just think if we just get over this hump and show whether there's a benefit, I think there's a lot, you know, we can compensate the city going forward.
We have, we've had public comments and some questions. We can, I can entertain a motion, we can have further discussion, we can decide that we're not ready to move forward on this matter and give direction for more information, or we can say that this is altogether something we don't want to approve. So Council, what is your preference? Councilmember Strong?
I'd like us to have a little more discussion before we call for a motion, because I think, I personally have some serious reservations about it. That, you know, if you want to find out what the other council members think first, I would like to make some comments.
I think you're welcome to make comments. If you could, I think we heard a little bit about your thoughts, maybe if you could focus, match a little bit on like, what outcome would you like from today? That might help.
Yeah. Okay, well, I was just, I'm thinking out in my, you know, internally about, well, if we're really talking about, let's see how it goes for one year, and then if it does, so I was starting thinking, well, what about if we just do a one-year contract instead of agreement, instead of five-year, because that sounds like a much longer-term arrangement. But then I started thinking, but this year, we don't know what our situation's going to be. And then really, every year going forward, we don't know, and I, you know, kind of already said that. But because of those unknowns about whether we're going to have the kind of reservoir water we need for our residents at the end of, who knows? At the end of the summer, at the, at the winter, whether it rains, whether it doesn't, and climate change is just changing all of that. So bottom line is, I, I don't feel like I have enough information or assurance that we could make a change of course in a timely enough way to respond to unknowns into the future, to enter into this, this year. So I would prefer that if Trout Unlimited could come back with a much, you know, putting this into a context where a lot of other options are looked at, maybe, I do care about the management of fish and I appreciate the work they're doing, but I just, I feel like it's running too big of a risk for us to enter into an agreement where we can't predict the future of our water supply. And I also wanted to say, I agree that if at the end of this, the period that goes until October 31st, if we have discovered that in fact our reservoirs are really low, we are going to fall back on the Elias well with unknown impacts. So it, it, there is a connection. So anyway, I hope we table this and ask Trout Unlimited to put it into a bigger context with a little more look at several years and, and what, what could happen going forward to make it really worth our taking that risk. And I, I'm not ready to do that tonight.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
You know, I've, I've got some trepidation myself, but at the same time, maybe as part of coming back to us. And Matthew, thank you for, thank you for putting some work in this. To me, it'd be an easier sell if maybe as part of this, we're going into this with the idea of doing the inflatable dam structure and in which case I'm gambling with, even if it's an application with this, then I'd say going to Vegas with a little more of a sure bet than, and throwing money on the, on the table than, than not, so to speak. That's kind of, I'm not sure if that's even possible, feasible to get your help doing that, in which case it would be easy to give, you know, throw the money down, down the stream, so to speak, with the idea that it may amount to money towards raising our dam, in which case it would also help our groundwater, because we wouldn't have to touch it, we could develop our dam more. Just kind of throwing that out.
Yes, this is Larry. I, I'm along, I, I go along with Jerry. I just think that it's, it's, this is too premature to, to do it and I would, I would appreciate a little more amount of water to be coming into the reservoir before I commit to this, because we could be actually like, like it was said, we could be drawing out of the, the underground before. So I'm really not forward under this circumstances. Thank you.
All right. Our reservoirs are full. Last I heard, they were overflowing. So I'm not sure that we could get more water coming in, but I think Councilmember Gonzalez made a good point, that it would be nice to have something in place where we're already collecting water, maybe in another season, where we could then, this water downstream for this study. I appreciate all the work that Mr. Clifford has done on this. I know you came before council before. I'm sure you've invested a lot of time and energy into, into trying to put this together, but it does sound like the consensus of the councils that we, we do need some more information. I don't think you got a hard no, but you definitely did get a yes today from the group. And my advice would be to, to work with City Manager Bender and see what else you could do essentially to reassure council that this is a, a good investment of our precious resource. All right. And with that.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, can I, can I just ask you about time? Oh, thank you. I just, just before we hang up here, I just wanted to, so that, that makes sense and we're happy to get more information together. I just wanted to ask you about timing. I mean, it's late May now. If we were to try to do this, you know, this year, which again is a pretty dry year, is a pretty important one for fish, is there a chance, I mean, I can work with the mayor and again, and, and Public Works and try to get more information together, but is there another chance like in the next month to be able to come back before the council or is that not realistic, do you think? Or am I just trying to figure out if we might still have a chance of doing this release this year?
I would defer to Scott Herman or City Manager Bender on that, because I'm, I'm not really.
Okay. Well, I'll talk to them off-line. Thank you again for having me.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you for being here and I guess we'll have you a follow-up with them. I appreciate your time. All right. So we're going to table that matter for another time. And then our next order of business, let's see, we removed item number seven and we're moving on to item number eight. Adopt a resolution approving the addition of one full-time employee staff with the title of accountant in the finance department to perform the duties of payroll for city staff. Director, what arrest will take this?
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, City Manager and council members. Can I bring in before you this staff report requesting council approval on an additional staff member to perform the duties of payroll, cost allocation, grant, project tracking, and various other accounting duties to better serve the city's needs? In the past, this position was funded by, in the finance department as a senior accountant. Currently, the duties are being performed by the human resources director, which unfortunately takes up very time, that can be better spent in serving the city on other duties. This position brings us one step closer to catching up on the financial responsibilities of the city and will provide some needed help in payroll as we migrate from the payroll module into the ACS system in preparation of the city's new accounting system migrating into this city's new accounting system that will better suit the city's needs and provide much-needed reporting to councils. So with that said, I'm able to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Any questions from?
Yeah, I just want to jump in here a little bit as well. And it's in the agenda summary, but I think it's kind of, it's worth noting, you know, for the last couple of months here, we've been looking at realignments of staffing workflows, and this is a continuation of that whole process. This is actually, we're putting together the, the building blocks to build a very efficient office arrangement and functionality within city hall. I don't think it's, I don't think I'm going to be stretching the truth any, but our current capacity with payroll has been problematic and it's just because of the software we've been utilizing, it's not the best fit for this size or this type of organization. And this is going to definitely move us in a different light in our ability to provide payroll, accountability, journal entries, all these critical elements that we have not been doing very well in the finance department as we've been short-staffed and, and missing someone with Manny's capabilities and seeing the big picture and putting all the pieces together. So, and there's another item here, and this is kind of, you know, this, we're bringing this before you, it could have been folded into the budget, to the proposed annual budget that will be coming before the council in a week or two here, but we wanted to take the opportunity and throw out the job description and, and our intent for this. There were some comments that, you know, are we spending wisely the Measure K funding? And I just want to say to the councilmen and the general public who's listening is that the Measure K is being used wisely. You will see that as we present our budget. We do know that there's a need to have that oversight committee and that is something we will be rolling forward with in the new fiscal year. One of the problems why we haven't organized that committee right now is that our financial, like we have said several times, our financial house was in somewhere of disarray. It didn't have internal structure, it didn't have accountability. And now that Manny's presence and, and our recent staffing appointments, we're building in that capacity. And now we're, now we're prepared to present to the public what its Measure K is doing to this organization and the wise usage of those funds. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to explain that and we'll go into more detail as we present the budget.
Gonzalez?
City Manager Bender's explanation there makes it clear to me that we need to know where we've been, where we're going, in the interest of transparency. So I would support this for that reason, because I know that we all promised the community to spend this money wisely, but this department, we need to have a clear idea where we're spending our money and how we're doing it. And I want to give Manny the resources so that we can be as clear and concise and transparent with the community. So I just wanted to say that.
Yes, this is Larry. I agree with Jerry. I just think that it, it's a good step forward. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I agree also. I would like to have a way to sort of track what's happened over the last, say, four or five years with our, what do you call it, you know, our allocation of staff positions versus which ones were actually filled and kind of what the budget trajectory has been. Because I, I don't want to, I mean, I don't think that's what we're doing and I think I approve of what we are doing, but I don't want to fill positions to catch up with mistakes that we made two years ago or three years ago and then have a, a permanent growth in staff if we can get by. I want us to run a really tight ship. So I just kind of, it's been so confusing and having so many vacancies that we are trying to make up some lost time here, and I appreciate that we're doing that. But I don't want us to just sort of add positions that then, two years from now are, are too many, you know, that's all. So I wanted, as part of the budget, I'm hoping you can kind of give us that five-year picture or something like that, that would help me understand it.
And I also want to comment on that as well. The positions, we've been very selective in our appointments with these new staff hirings. We are looking at the future. We're looking at not what the skill sets they bring to the table today, but we're also, as we stabilize the finance department and other city hall functionalities, functions, and, and how the finance department is going to coordinate with community development, engineering, public works, grant activity, we've realized these positions that we, we described and, and positioned. We're not, we're not looking at where they fit our needs now. We're actually looking, you know, three, four, or five years down the road, because we recognize that that's where the, where the rubber meets the road, actually. We can fill a need right now. We can almost as hire a consultant to do some of the work. We did that and it's not the most efficient way. We're looking at the people we can bring in, the skill sets and their willingness to be a part of a team and build something for the future. We're enhancing their skills and we're going to utilize those skills in the future in different ways.
Didn't, just a clarification, didn't we also outsource the payroll for a while with fairly disastrous results? So this would be bringing it in, Alice, is that, am I correct?
No, we have to do that and it was, it was, ADP is our software. It, it's just not suitable for, you know, with the PD with their shift changes and the different MOU agreements. It just doesn't work very nicely. So we do have an internal plan. We're going to do a stopgap measure with some of the staffing we have under Manny's guidance. And we had it in the budget this year. We didn't get to it because we had other needs that were more pressing, but the allocation in the proposed budget is a new municipal software, accounting software. And we're not saying that is the key to all our hills, but we're going to do, the current software is somewhat outdated. It doesn't meet our needs, both for accounting and municipal functions as well as payroll. And we're going to bring that in. We have new staff. We're just kind of keeping them in the loop as much as possible and we don't want to get them too trained on the existing, because we know we're going to transition to something that's more better, better suited to our needs.
I, and I would agree. I see this as an investment and in the city, there's lots of ways that we invest in having, having our finances in good order and transparent and easy to read and up-to-date and current is critical to making good decision-making for our city leaders and for administration. So I support this. Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second. This is Larry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anybody from the public that wants to address this? All right. Having heard none, any further comment from council? Gonzalez, you're muted. We can't hear you. Can you type in the chat bar?
Oh, sorry about that. I just wanted to say for Dolores's records, I wanted to move staff recommendation for her, her clarity.
Thank, thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that. So we have a motion and a second, as stated in the agenda packet, for the item to approve the addition of one full-time staff member with the title of accountant in the finance department. Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
And with that, it is the end of the meeting on this Thursday night. We are going to adjourn my clock to 7:40 and hope to see you all at the Memorial Car Show this weekend. And have a great, have a great Memorial Day weekend. Thank you, staff, for all your hard work.
Thank you.
We've got a good team.